Everybody ready? Follow with a yes. Nikki, you want to do a roll call?
Thank you Chair Bone, we'll start with you.
I am here.
Good Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
And Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Thank you.
Madam C A O. What oh. Oh, it's the flag, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on. I bypassed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now.
Good morning Chair Bone, there are no modifications to the agenda today.
Look at you guys. Well, with that, I will bring it to, we've got a few of these today. I've got one, look at me, I get to go right off the get go. My favorite one. Now. You can both come up. There's power in twos. This is a county Board of Supervisors Resolution in honor of the 25th anniversary of the Serendipity Bookstore. Just anything named Serendipity's got to be good. Whereas the members of the Friends of the Redwood Libraries raise money in it and volunteers their time to ensure the Humboldt County Library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, whereas the Friends of the Redwood Libraries Serendipity Bookstore opened in October 1999 as a result of the late and great Frances Rappin's idea to sell used books as a means to raise funds to meet unbudgeted library needs. Whereas since that opening, that proceeds from the Serendipity Bookstore have exceeded $625,000 and have enabled the Friends of the Redwood Libraries to help with expenses such as new book purchases, library improvements, furniture and equipment, children's programs, and travel costs for library staff to attend out-of-town conferences and training programs. Whereas the Serendipity Bookstore's success can be attributed to more than 30 current volunteers who donate their time by working in the bookstore, receiving, sorting, and pricing book donations, and stocking shelves. Whereas in October 2024, the Serendipity Bookstore will mark 25 years of service to the Humboldt County Library and its patrons, providing customers with countless hours of reading enjoyment and giving thousands of books a new life. Now therefore be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes the 25th anniversary of the Serendipity Bookstore and thanks to Friends of the Redwood Libraries for all they do to make the Humboldt County Library a cornerstone of our community.
Keep clapping. They're not in the library, you can make your questions. Or somebody can be quiet.
Does anybody take a picture or something?
Nobody's taking a picture, but thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
And I love anytime I can read Frances.
Lovely.
Lovely, thank you. Well, thank you, my name is Laura McEwen, I'm a volunteer at Serendipity Bookstore. And I want to acknowledge some special people, first of all, I want to thank Chris Cooper, the Director of the Library, for being so supportive of our work. And also Debbie Reyes, the President of the Friends of the Redwood Library. And two very special people, Marjorie Malcolm, who is the Manager of Serendipity Bookstore, and Stephanie Hillman. And I welcome you to come find your own book and find or book CD or DVD at Serendipity so you can really find your own Serendipity at the Serendipity Bookstore. We're located on the second floor of the library and we're open the same hours as the library. So come up and see what you can find, we've got a wonderful selection of things. Thank you.
I want to say, and I love the story, they've got like 2,000 books for my neighbor Frances Rappin, who passed away this year at 103, and he was still going to the library at 100 or close to 100. She'd lost her sight, but she was still going to wipe down books and do whatever she could do because she felt so strongly about it. So now they've named, she started the Serendipity, but they've also named the Community Service Award after her for the Friends of the Library, so she was a great neighbor. I knew everything that was going on at the library back in those days. Anybody else? Any hands up? Nope, okay. We'll go to the next one, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Chair Bone.
Yes.
Can I make a correction to the roll call? I didn't announce that Supervisor Royo is absent today, so I just wanted to get that in the record before we went on to vote on anything.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Otherwise we would have thought she was just quiet. Now I go Supervisor Bushnell, right? Hang on. Oh, I've got, I got Sasha Marini, Boys and Girls Clubs. Whereas Humboldt County. Hi. Is credited with having the first youth court program in the state of California with a successful model established in 1987 until the early 90s with a solely volunteer-run program. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club Teen Court Program began in 2001 to serve the youth of Humboldt County, this time with the support of paid staff. And whereas since June 2007 Sasha Marini has served diligently as the Program Director for Humboldt County Teen Court totaling over 17 years of service to the youth of Humboldt County, demonstrating unwavering dedication and integrity. Whereas Sasha Marini started in June of 2007, she has overseen the completion of 439 juvenile cases diverted from traditional punitive means, reflecting her compassionate approach to justice and commitment to positive change. Whereas during Sasha Marini's tenure at Humboldt County Teen Court, she has overseen an extremely low average of recidivism of only 9.7%, which translated into a 90.3 success rate as Program Director, exemplifying her ability in fostering growth and resilience among the youth. And whereas Sasha Marini has thoughtfully executed her mission of disrupting the school-to-prison pipeline, offering a positive, restorative, and overall more constructive alternative than traditionally punitive juvenile justice system while consistently embodying empathy and leadership. Whereas Sasha has selflessly allocated her time to guiding the Youth Leaders Board of Humboldt County Teen Court, having taken countless youth leaders under her wing as their mentor, teaching them what true leadership looks like, and inspiring them with her own exemplary character and dedication. Now therefore be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and recognizes Sasha Marini for her serving as Director, Mentor, Role Model, and Friend to endless and countless Humboldt County youth and making a mark on the lives who truly need guidance with a remarkable kindness and unwavering commitment. You guys can clap for that one.
Oh, I feel really honored today, it's very emotional being a part of the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods Teen Court Program. It's an honor to collaborate with Humboldt County Superior Court, the Humboldt County Juvenile Probation, the Police Departments, the schools, but ultimately it's the teens that I work with, it's such an honor to be able to provide a space where they can really shine and have their voices heard in a way that counts. The teens that I work with show up week after week tirelessly dedicate volunteer hours to help other teens who are struggling. And to be able to witness that and to foster that empowerment with the teens in our community has been a privilege and I look forward to, as they grow up, being a part of our community that are really leading positive initiatives in our community. Oftentimes when a participant comes through our program, we ask them, you know, what do you want to get out of Teen Court? What do you hope will be different for you when this process is over? And the overarching theme is, you know, they want to leave a better person. And I would like to say ultimately I am leaving a better person, the teens in our community have shown me how important it is that this isn't just a job to show up for, it's important to be authentic, be a trustworthy person, be someone who listens and cares to their concerns, and they meet that with vigor as well. So I really give thanks to the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods, the teens, and everyone who's helped me along on my journey, including my parents and my sister who hopefully are live streaming this right now. So thank you everyone.
Hello, my name is Ethan Lo Cicero and I'm the Leaders Board Chairman with Humboldt County Teen Court. In learning that our Director, my mentor Sasha Marini, was going to retire, I felt immediately heartbroken. Not just because I was going to go my last semester without my mentor, without that guidance, but because those who will come after me will not get the same guidance as I did. Over the past three years I have spent with Teen Court, the only constant has been the unwavering support and leadership that Sasha provided to me and every other volunteer. In writing this resolution before the Board today and this speech, I had time to reflect on those three years. Some of the best times of my life Sasha was always there. Her kind, resolute, and caring demeanor first comes to mind. Then I thought back and remembered how she would give great input in just a way where she would still let us, the youth, make the decisions. Or at least think that we were making the decisions. I look back and I see a Director who truly cares about all the youth she comes in contact with, a Director who put others' needs above her own, and a caring Mentor who would do anything to see you succeed. In Sasha's 17 years of service to our community through Teen Court, the program had an average recidivism rate of less than 10%, which translates to over 90% of first-time juvenile offenders, their cases being resolved, without the youth having to come back to Teen Court. Sasha is, Sasha is and always will be at the core of our program, and she will be missed dearly by all those whose life she has touched, including mine. Thank you.
Okay Supervisor Madron. Let's see, Kevin here? No.
He's online. Thank you Chair Bone. Yeah Kevin Drayer, if we could unmute him. Kevin, I'm going to read this very brief but very heartfelt letter of appreciation for you. And then I will bring a copy of that to the next MICMAC meeting to share with you, but thank you for being here in the Zoom. So, dear Kevin, on behalf of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, we would like to thank you for your time you have served on the McKinnonville Municipal Advisory Committee. You have done an excellent job serving the citizens of Humboldt County and we appreciate your passion for community. All the years and fundamentals you have provided to the MICMAC does not go unnoticed or without great appreciation. And Kevin is our longest-serving member of the MICMAC. I don't know if he was here the very first year, but he's been here I think it's 12 years, but you can correct me if I'm wrong Kevin. And with that, I believe you're unmuted and you can go ahead and share with us any thoughts you might have for us today. Thank you Kevin.
Thank you Supervisor Madron, and I'd also like to thank the rest of the Board for your confidence in me to have approved my application from the very beginning, I was on the very first Board. And for reappointing me two more times. I feel like three terms, 12 years, was a long time. My daughter graduated from high school this last year and is off to college, and I really felt like wow, that 12 years, she got her entire first grade to high school education in that time. And maybe it's time for me to graduate and let somebody else take over the role that wants to serve. So I appreciate it, I'm honored that I was able to do that. It was a great education and learning experience for me. I'm proud to have chaired the Board for a year, and in that time, we were in a deadline crunch for the Town Center Ordinance. And I imagine not a month went by that we did not have a special meeting, two meetings every month at least, to facilitate that process. And we made a lot of progress that year. And I also want to say that I'm very supportive of the new appointees, the reappointees of Maya Conrad and Kevin Jenkins, they're both on very important subcommittees and are really doing a great job and they work hard. Mary, I couldn't, I couldn't support anyone more, she works hard, she's dedicated, I really appreciate that she was appointed to have my seat there, and I'm sure she's going to do a great job. And the Committee will work together, we're really good at working together, we've got a lot of experience doing that, most of the people on the Board have been there for at least almost a full term or more. And Lisa's doing a great job as Chair. So again, thank you, I appreciate the confidence, it was an honor to serve, and it's time to give somebody else a chance. So thanks again.
Well, thank you so much Kevin for being here and sharing those words with us. I think it was what, three, three and a half years that the Committee worked on the Town Center Ordinance, and something like that could have easily driven people apart with different opinions, but I think you and I would both agree that in fact it made you stronger. And the group while they have very different opinions of things, has really come to have great respect for each other in those different opinions and are working together for the benefit of the Committee. And you have been a huge part of that Kevin, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I also want to thank my wife for putting up with me being at so many meetings for all that time.
Absolutely, thanks Kevin.
There you go. Next one is also Mr. Madron.
Thank you very much Chair Bone. So this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors in honor of Jimmy Carter. So he turns 100 years old today, speaking of people turning 100, Supervisor Bone mentioned the wonderful person that was involved in the library, and I think we all have fond memories of all the hard work that Jimmy and his wife Rosalyn also did, so I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas James "Jimmy" Earl Carter Jr. entered state politics after serving as a naval officer for seven years and was eventually elected as the Governor of Georgia, where he attracted attention by emphasizing ecology, efficiency in government, and the removal of racial barriers. And whereas Jimmy Carter served as the 39th President of the United States from 1977 to 1981, where he implemented clean energy and environmental conservation policies and practices, including installing solar panels on the White House, instituting recycling programs across federal government departments, enacting environmental protection legislation, and establishing the Department of Energy to ensure an environmentally sustainable future. And whereas Carter's commitment to peace, democracy, human rights, and humanitarian values that respect all people were recognized by being awarded the Nobel Peace Prize, the Presidential Medal of Freedom, and the United Nations Human Rights Prize. And whereas his ongoing work includes resolving conflict, promoting democracy, protecting human rights, and alleviating human suffering in the United States and globally through the Carter Center, as well as helping low-income people build their own housing through Habitat for Humanity. And whereas since 1984, President and Mrs. Carter have been champions and strong voices for affordable, decent housing for all, donating their time and leadership each year to build and improve homes through Habitat's Carter Word Project. And whereas over the course of more than 30 years, the Carters have worked alongside nearly 100,000 volunteers in 14 countries to build, renovate, and repair more than 4,000 homes, and have inspired millions more through their dedication to Habitat's mission. Whereas Oryx, California, has a powerful story about Carter, given there is a large peanut on the side of the highway, although it got hit recently and somewhat dilapidated, but it is there and it was something that was a really big deal back in the 1970s. It was a marker of Carter's efforts to protect land. And whereas on October 5th, actually happened on Sunday, there was a public event in Oryx celebrating the 100th birthday of President Jimmy Carter, and it was open to the community and signifies the importance of his economic and environmental work. And about 30 elk showed up for the ceremony as well, right outside the door of the community center, which was quite amazing, especially for out-of-town guests. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors affirms these values and wishes to honor Jimmy Carter as he turns 100 on October 1st, 2024, and supports a Jimmy Carter Jamboree during the week of October 1st through the 8th in Humboldt County. So congratulations President Carter, and it's an honor to have you have served for our country. So, and I don't believe he's here today, but.
You can applaud, I don't think he's going to hear it, I don't think he's online either, but. Okay, we are going to do Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, is there anyone here for domestic violence?
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, whereas October is annually recognized as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas progress continues to be made towards violence prevention, domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious issue affecting all people regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sex, gender, socioeconomic status, literacy, sexuality, ability, religion, culture, and immigration status. And whereas domestic and intimate partner violence survivors are deprived of dignity, security, and autonomy with a systematic use of control and power through physical, emotional, sexual, sociological, and economic abuse. And whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavior problems in adolescents, and serious adult health problems. And whereas Humboldt Domestic Violence Service, H D V S, has been serving Humboldt County since 1977 to continuously support all those living or escaping abuse. And whereas all survivors deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and services to increase their safety and self-sufficiency. H D V S enlists a diverse array of allies, agencies, and community members in supporting survivors of domestic and intimate partner violence. And whereas only together can we change the health and safety of our community by challenging the societal norms and per, I can't say that, violence. And now therefore it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors recognizes the month of October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Hello, thank you, I'm Emily Fuentes Nielsen, I'm the Executive Director at Humboldt Domestic Violence Services, and this is Melissa Reed, she's Health Education Specialist with the D H H S who focuses a lot on domestic violence and intimate partner violence for the county. We just want to thank you for acknowledging domestic violence, as we know that it is still in our community, although we are here trying actively to support survivors. And we just want to thank the help of all of our community partners, and if anyone is interested in supporting our work, obviously you can connect with our agency, but you could also connect with the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee, that is an array of different organizations trying to help survivors. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last one will go to Supervisor Bushnell. Oh, no, hang on.
Yes, next last.
Oh, last one Jared Orik.
Thank you, so we will be closing in memory of Jared Orik today. Jared, he worked at Fortuna High School for 15 years, he was a Department Chair during his time at Fortuna Union High School, as well as a member of a leadership team. I didn't personally know Jared, but I've heard through the community that he really, you know, excelled at Fortuna High School, that the student body loved him, and he had a medical emergency and unfortunately passed away very young and leaves a family and children, and so we're going to honor him today in his memory by closing.
All right, thank you for bringing that. And with that, I'll bring the consent calendar back to the Board and ask for public comment on the consent calendar. You have a caller?
We sure do Chair, thank you, caller 7718, star six to unmute. And you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Gensaloski from Mexico, I would like to comment on item 1. This is $440, it was hard for me to understand this item, while it's a small amount of money would be allocated to this, but it looked like an addition to a whole bunch of other money spent, but $440 is an interesting number. I would like to speak on item 9. We have a, we're trying to get some more people to help us with child welfare, apparently we are very short on people, and we don't have police managers who can do the top cases, complex cases, strongly support community colleges. I think, I think we have a beta flaw in this and it's reflective, and what I've seen coming out with some of the things in this, in the D H H S Department regarding not hiring qualified specialists, people are trained, people are demerit more than a year, and I think it's something that is being reflected in what's happening within the county here. We strongly support you gaining some competent people there, rather than what's going on within that department. Thank you for not refusing to speak on this consent items today.
Chair, we have no more callers in the.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the.
She has another caller I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. We moved in second.
Thank you Chair Bone, Supervisor Wilson, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
And Chair Bone.
Yep.
Thank you, motion carries 4-0.
Well, we have a public comment on non-agenda items.
Good morning. I'd like to know who made the call to allocate over 60% of Code Enforcement's annual budget to abate one property that's keeping about 30 people off the street? If it is the Board, then I have to wonder if you are furthering your own self-interests given the plans to develop the neighborhood around Yee Haw, you know, with Mercer Frasier and Green Diamond's support. And if it's Ford, you know, I've really got to wonder, you know, does he really think this is going to be the right move? Does he really think that unhousing over two dozen residents that have nowhere else to go is going to be good for the county of Humboldt? And I wonder what the citizens think about this too. One of the things that was referenced last week is that we don't have adequate sanitation. But you know, I go to the restroom at Arcata and there's no soap, you know? I can't remember the last time there was actually hand soap in the Eureka Public Rest- I can't remember the last time there was actually hand soap in the Eureka Public Restroom. So I just wonder why we're being asked to be held at a higher standard than the county holds themselves. Additionally, last week, the Brown Act was violated by this board by changing the time without allowing knowledge of the time change. 92-year-old Jack Noonan arrived at 1:00 PM when it was supposed to be happening, and he was not allowed to speak. We are pursuing... We have legal counsel, and we are involved in preparing a civil suit around that. Yeah, tomorrow, we're supposed to be inspected at Yee Haw, and we're asking the public to come out. We're going to have a big all-day musical gathering. There's going to be food. There's going to be some... Yeah, we're going to have a great time. We're going to open it up to the public. We're going to have everybody take a look at what's been going on. A few days ago, an old man just died in the streets of Eureka, and we have several elderly folks living at Yee Haw, and I just fear that that's going to happen to them, too. They're going to have nowhere to go. They have no support, and a place that they've been feeling very safe and secure for years is now being threatened. I really hope that the board can see the value of people above property values here in this regard. We are just locals trying to make it, trying to be upstanding citizens, and we need your help to allow it to continue existing. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else?
Chair Bone, we do have a caller in Zoom. Caller 7718, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm meeting twice a day. Do you hear me?
You're kind of muffled, but we can hear you.
Okay, I will try to speak clearly. I would just speak a little bit on what's going on in the city of Yee Haw. Recently, a city council member was behind. We actually have seven people running for two seats out there. Four of the people who are running went ahead and took the name of the head to be on the city council for a while. Three of those people have been attending the meetings. They've been met to the debate. They're participating in the thing. A couple of them are lifetime residents in Yee Haw. One of them actually served for two years prior on the council. The other person is kind of somebody who just changed their legacy, like a nice young man, that has not had the real... I asked him a few questions around back about a few major topics, and he didn't have any answers. So what we're going to watch is on October 8th, we're going to see whether the city council goes ahead and appoints this one person who really has very little experience, has only been in the community for maybe a year and a half, and may be a wonderful county member in the future, if that person's going to be appointed over the top of the other people who really have been interested in the position. So they're trapping that one. Another problem with Yee Haw, we have a city manager, Amanda Maynard, and she refuses to talk to people in the city events. Erin Beth McCourt has a major water tank thing going on at her place. Also, a guy wanted to come up there, and they wanted to drill on her property there a part mark. And they don't have the right to be there. They don't have any means to be there currently, again. Well, Erin Beth McCourt asked that the city manager call her, but apparently she doesn't want to communicate. Without communication, we don't get anything done. So anyway, I wish to give you a little update on what's happening in Yee Haw, and I hope that the city council members who are sitting there will appoint somebody who's qualified and the best person for the position rather than somebody who is going to run the job as the city manager. Thanks for that feedback.
Thank you. Yes, we have one more caller in the queue. Caller 9036. Star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
This is Allison Murphy. I wasn't able to attend the meeting that's in progress now in person today, and I'm sad about that, as I've listened to the other people who have called in, and the sound quality is absolutely terrible. And I feel very sad, knowing that most of the county probably won't be able to understand what any of us have said. But I'm here to report back on Ed Jensen's memorial service. It was glorious. It was a beautiful tribute to a man who lived his life well. And I was privileged to attend that service, particularly as someone who barely knew Ed and had really only worked with him on one of the last cases that he took on, which was supporting Charles Garth and the community of Yee Haw in negotiating with the county to try to find a solution that was not abatement. Felt like we were making progress with that, but March 12th, the last supervisor's meeting, on March 12th, there's an item on the agenda. Anybody who wants to read that item, you can go to the county website. You can go to the calendar. You can click on that meeting. You can look at meeting details. You can download any of those documents. Submitted to that meeting was a proposed resolution for the county written by Ed Jensen for emergency housing, which would allow people to live in their buses and their RVs because we have an emergency housing crisis, and which would allow people to live as they need to live during this emergency housing crisis without the threat of abatement. One of the most beautiful things that happened at this memorial service for Ed Jensen was afterwards, I was approached by Mrs. Redoni. I was able to meet former Supervisor Redoni, the wife of former Supervisor Redoni. And she shared her scrapbook with me, and there was an article written by Ed Jensen in memoriam for Roger Redoni, who was killed in a terrible car accident. And it talked about the hippie and the cowboy. Ed was the hippie, and Redoni was the cowboy. And I thought, the hippies and the cowboys are who are going to save America. Well, this is what Ed had to say in his memory of Roger. He said he remembered Roger coming back from a meeting about code enforcement, because there were a lot of code enforcement meetings then. And Roger had said at this meeting, "We don't bulldoze people's homes in this county." And I just...
Thank you, caller. And we heard you perfect up until your time ran out. So thank you very much. Seeing no one else? All right. We will move on to item... We will skip our time sets and go to item H. This is a public hearing?
Yep. Morning, Chair Bone. I don't believe these need to be read into the record.
Nope.
This, John Ford and Rhian Mayhem, to present two ordinances to the Board of Supervisors. The first one is relative to allowing residential uses within commercial zones, and the second one is to do some cleanups within the zoning ordinance as a whole. So I'm going to allow Ms. Mayhem now to present the... Give you a presentation, an overview on what is proposed and what the Planning Commission has recommended that you approve.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Rhian Wigan. I am Associate Planner with the Planning and Building Department. Today, I will be discussing the Commercial Residential and Zoning Updates Ordnances. First, I will be discussing the Commercial Residential Ordinance. The Commercial Residential Ordinance proposes the commercial residential to allow for the combination of commercial and residential uses or residential dwellings within commercial and industrial zones. This is to expand upon Senate Bill 6, the Middle Class Housing Act of 2022, which deems a housing development project as allowable use within a zone where office, retail, or parking is a principally permitted use. Commercial and industrial zonings are eligible under SB 6, but the ordinance will allow for the similar zones commercial, with the exception of limited industrial and heavy industrial. This is to preserve the county's inventory of these industrial zones and, for safety reasons, to allow for... Not allow for commercial residential to be located on a site or adjoining any site where more than one-third of the square footage is dedicated to industrial use. Staff recommended to not require a skilled and trained workforce to be paid the prevailing wage in the ordinance. Planning Commission concurred. The Commercial Residential Ordinance proposes that the conversion of existing commercial space into residential space cannot result in eviction of existing businesses. This is to maintain our current commercial businesses while not promoting the eviction and conversion for residential. Staff recommended to remove the urban cluster requirement. The Planning Commission concurred. These maps show the inland and coastal parcels that are currently eligible to develop residential units utilizing SB 6. These maps are based upon eligible zoning that is within urban clusters. So there's Fields Landing, cut in Humboldt Hills, Scotia, and then the Fortuna area. By removing the requirement for urban clusters, these parcels would also be eligible within District 5 of Willow Creek and Oryc for commercial residential. Districts 1 and 2, the Avenue of Giants area, and Shelter Cove. And in the coastal areas of Oryc, Samoa, Mandela Peninsula, Trinidad, Shelter Cove, and Lolita and Ferndale. There should be no short-term rentals in this area. If someone were to want to do transient habitation, they'd still be able to do that avenue through principally permitted zoning. The density, we are... Planning Commission concurred with a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre. This is to be consistent with the recently approved and adopted tiny house ordinance, tiny house village ordinance. There will be a minimum of 15 dwelling units per acre for vacant lots. There will be no minimum for developed lots. The proposal for a minimum of 15 dwelling units for vacant lots is to ensure that commercial zone properties will not be converted into single-family residential developments. Parking may be reduced up to 50% of the spaces for the residential use with administrative permit. However, current parking regulations apply. We are just offering further reductions, and no parking requirements will be required for 100% affordable projects within one-half mile walking distance of public transit stops. Public comments received from the Planning Commission workshop and public hearing were to keep the urban cluster requirement, remove density maximum, incentivize prevailing wages, and remove parking minimums. These public comments were addressed and discussed with the Planning Commission. And that will conclude the presentation on the Commercial Residential Ordinance. We will now pull up or be open for questions and then can pull up the ordinance after.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I'm wondering about the parking requirements in, say, downtown Garberville, if there was to be a conversion there where there is no onsite parking?
So basically, what we're doing is by creating this as an allowed use within the commercial district, it would be treated as an allowed use, which would not be an increase in parking, so it would be able to continue just as it currently is.
I'm... Okay, so I'll reference my store. There is no onsite parking. It's all public parking. And so if I was to convert that to residential, there would be no parking requirement?
Correct.
And does that reference in there? Because I didn't see that.
That is something that we've dealt with separately. This doesn't need to be in this ordinance, because there are allowances for places like Garberville, which is a downtown district that has no parking.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. These are going to kind of jump a little bit all over the place. The first one is under the SB 6 skilled labor provision. So I guess then it gives the jurisdiction the authority to remove that from the... I was just kind of wondering, like, why is it in there? Or not why is it in there, but how is it that we have that authority to remove that requirement from the...
So that's a great question. And so we're not changing SB 6. SB 6 will continue to exist right alongside this. The thing that basically we have done is identified in implementing SB 6 what requirements the county would impose, so that if you're in a commercial zone and you meet the requirements here, you don't need to go through the SB 6 exercise. You can just follow the county's zoning ordinance. And it would not require the skilled workforce.
We wouldn't require it.
Correct.
Would the state require it, then? Is that... Is there a separate...
The state would require it if they're going under SB 6. With this, they don't have to. They can simply follow the county's ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Because I was like, God, you know, when I was looking through SB 6 to begin with, if we were applying SB 6, then who would enforce skilled labor requirements? Like, would that be us? Or... Okay, so this kind of gets us out of that loop or gets the developer out of that space. Okay, appreciate that. More than understanding. The threshold of the one-third of the industrial zoned area to be have been developed in terms of its square footage, so if there's a development, if there's a residential development that then occurs, say there's, you know, residential development occurs next door because that one-third threshold hasn't been met, does that then hold that property at one-third? Do you see what I'm saying? So what happens when it expands to greater than one-third and you've already put in a residential development next door?
So it would not affect the industrial property. What it would do is then affect further development of the residential property if it didn't or the parcel that has residences on it. It would not be able to continue to build out with residences. It would be held there if it exceeded that threshold.
Is this something that was... Is this an SB 6 threshold?
That's an SB 6 threshold.
I mean, it seems like it would be a little easier to maybe have a setback or a buffer than this one-third, just because it seems like it can change. And I assume the point of the one-third threshold is to... For the health and safety of the people living in the residential area, but they're not actually protected from future development, as we're hearing.
Correct. That's part of the reason that we did not include the industrial property in our ordinance, is that then it minimizes that conflict, so people aren't looking to develop on industrial property where we have to constantly be gauging that.
Right. If we didn't apply this, these new entitlements to properties that were adjacent, directly adjacent to industrial properties, which would be one way to buffer them, would... What laws? How many... Do you have any idea how many? Like, would that be a big impact to the potential inventory of parcels?
So just subjectively?
Yeah.
There's not a lot of commercial properties that are immediately adjacent to industrial parcels.
Okay. From my mind, it would be simpler to just say no properties adjacent to industrial. It would... If the purpose of that is to protect the residential users or, you know, the residences of that space, it seems like it can change. So that's just one...
That's a fairly easy change.
Up for discussion, and I'm okay to... Then on the... On the urban cluster... Up for discussion and I'm okay to, then on the, on the urban clusters, the, so there's, the way that it's addressed in here is like, so there's this, a definition of urban cluster as per SP six, right? Is that where it is?
Urban clusters really comes out of the Census Bureau and is something that's used for a lot of different purposes.
All right. So again, we're kind of optioning whether that's what we're looking at here is to remove the urban cluster requirement, which would be in that this, these would happen in areas that are a little bit more urban cluster. But part of it for us is a little different because we look at things and we did, as we did with the tiny house stuff, is like, does it have services? And I think that that is from, from the perspective of, of this county is probably a more reasonable threshold. Like, I think, I think commercial zoning that has services versus commercial zonings that meets an urban cluster requirement is something that is probably more appropriate. Can you, this is my thought, I just wanted to hear what you think to that.
In fact, you're, you're keying into something that was part of our thinking is that most of the commercial parcels within the county are in, are in areas either served by public water and sewer or served by a CSD. So we didn't say that, but that could simply be added to the end of the provision within the ordinance that says it's allowed in these zones where public water and sewer are available, including services provided by a CSD.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just going to just kind of list the questions.
Can you say that, can you say that again?
Yeah, yeah. So the way that, the way that, so thi- this kind of land use changes are, were spurred on by Senate Bill Six, right? So it's like, the idea is to like, have more allowances and flexibility to have residential development within commercial zones so you have more mixed use, but, which we all know. So the, the SP six basically said, kind of has it confined to these areas called urban clusters. And the urban clusters definition is, is I'm.
Basically between McKinleyville and Fortuna.
Yeah. And so, but some of those areas may not actually have water and sewer and all that other stuff. So it's like, maybe not the best place to be putting like multifamily housing and that sort of thing. That's from my perspective. I mean, I'm just saying, and, and we went through this discussion with the tiny house stuff too. So I, I think it's practical to limit this type, limit the expansion of this sort of kind of density development. I mean, it's gonna be impractical anyway in some, in some form. It's gonna be expensive to develop an area, I would imagine, a commercial area that doesn't have services, but ultimately, I think it's just good policy for us not to have that development in areas without services. And that's just my thoughts.
It was part of the thinking is to really focus on areas that already are developed with commercial uses or have commercial zoning. Those largely are within community services districts and are closer to services within communities where housing is needed.
Right.
And, and so by doing that, it, it really takes better advantage of the rural nature of Humboldt County, which then does have some population centers that are scattered throughout, but may not be within an urban cluster.
And there is some concern, I think. It's not just about cert, I mean, we're kind of talking about services like water sewer, that sort of thing. I mean, frankly, if you're opening up sort of multifamily housing, which we all want to have more of, but in locations where you don't have the kinds of services such as a store or any of those sorts of things, then you have isolated communities which we, which we're having, for instance, are, are Affordable Housing Project in Samoa, for instance. Very isolated is what happens when we have the very NIMBY perspective on, on, on Affordable Housing. You end up having developments in areas where we don't have bus service, you don't have a store, you're really isolating communities. And, and I'm just trying to see if there's a way that we can, is there language that we don't move ourselves in that direction with this, with this ordinance?
Yeah, I think we can put some language up on the screen that would address this.
Can we, before you do that, through the chair, could I make a comment?
Of course.
I'm curious, because I'm, I'm not agreeing with everything you're saying. And so I'm curious on two things. Evergreen down in Southern Humboldt has residential adjacent to that, the, it's a business park and it's heavy industrial. And so what Mike was saying earlier about heavy indus, being, limiting or excluding from that is that, that zoning area, I'm not feeling that. And also, I'm curious about the, for the residential and commercial, like the Cooks Valley area, which is also mixed, it's residential and commercial. And would the new language that he is proposing exclude those areas?
Cooks Valley, yes, because it is, it's not within a, I don't believe it has communities, it doesn't have water and sewer.
It, it doesn't. You're correct. But it has, there is many residentials there and there is also a commercial there, which is being vacant, is vacant right now and could be converted to housing very easily and already has sewer and water to the buildings because that's required for commercial. And so I'm not, for the un, very unincorporated areas, especially in my district, where housing could be appropriate there, I'm not feeling his language change.
I understand that. But we, they were talking about multifamily housing, that we're not talking about single-family residential, are we? In terms of this change for?
For vacant lots, we're talking about multifamily housing. For existing lots that have either commercial or maybe an existing unit on it, there is no minimum threshold. They can just add units.
Add units up to a certain density.
Up to thirty units per acre.
Could we limit density in areas that don't have services? Do you see what I'm saying? Because I, I, I hear what Supervisor Bushnell is saying, like, and I actually kind of agree. Like, if you have some commercial space and maybe you want to have a caretaker's unit or actually have some, you know, some ability to develop that for housing as, but it is, we, we can create a pretty, housing's very needed, but we can create a pretty substantial service burden from a local government perspective if we're putting multifamily housing in areas that are quite isolated. And that, which is different, Cooks Valley is very different than say like Garberville or Redway or somewhere in between those spaces. That's a very different ability to serve that community. And we're seeing that even as locally as what we're seeing in Samoa, which is not that far away from our urban, you know, most, most urban core. And the expense around that and sort of in, in, in how that is. And this is kind of the, this is, this is the, this is sort of like the policy, you know, discussion that we have, you know? And so I'm wondering, can we have sort of a midway space where there's like, you know, up to two units on existing so that people can get into those spaces they need to so that that property can be occupied versus multifamily housing?
Yeah, that's a policy decision.
Right.
For the board to consider. We can write in what, whatever you want. One of the things that we did with the tiny home village ordinance is that where there wasn't water and sewer required a special permit so that could be separately evaluated. It didn't preclude it, but it required a higher level of review.
So we could as an option require a special permit for areas without services?
Correct.
And that would, that might, that might be a way to ameliorate that so that we can have a, you know, a, an evaluation of that at the planning commission level, right?
Or zoning administrator.
Or zoning administrator.
Yeah, if it's not controversial and, and it works, it, you know, it could go to the zoning administrator.
Okay. And then I have a question about parking.
Can, can we address the, the industrial portion?
Yeah. So in the MB, we are adding provisions to allow residential in MB.
Okay.
That's in both, I believe it's in this ordinance, it is, and also then within the follow-up ordinance that we have after this for the other zoning clearances to allow residential in, in, in business park.
Okay, but Mike, our Supervisor Wilson had, you had a problem with that, Mike? Our Supervisor Wilson?
Well, no, I'm talking about the multifamily part of this. And so when you say MB, which is the?
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial.
No, MB is business park.
Business park.
MH is heavy industrial.
Okay, so in, it's a, right. The, the issue, I mean, this kind of goes both ways. Because what happens is if you're trying to protect industrial uses, right, which part of, you don't want to have conflicting, you want to, they're gonna, you know, oh, we have this entitlement to expand our industrial use. They expand the industrial use up to the line and then suddenly you have an apartment building next to it and people are freaking out, right? There's like smells and noises and all kinds of, now that's on us. We have to deal with that, right? So one of the things that zoning, for it's all its good and bad, the part about zoning that we do like is trying to reduce that, that conflict. And that's what I'm trying to get at is like, I, I'm, I, I don't want to see an expansion of industrial use because we allowed something that we, that we are admit, or we're acknowledging could have an impact. That's why we're saying only one-third is if that's sort of like, that's a reason, you know, it's only one-third of it, so it's fine, it's good enough. But what I, what I'm saying is like, that expands and then suddenly we have an issue on our hands. And we've imposed that, we've imposed basically a restriction on the industrial user, on the industrial parcel owner, a de facto one. And so I think the, you know, as an industrial parcel owners might, might be a little concerned about having residential use upright up against their property.
I would agree with that, particularly for light industrial and heavy industrial.
Yeah.
Typically, business park is intended to be something a little bit different.
Yeah.
And we've only got two MB zones in the county.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. One is in McKinleyville and that currently has some offices in it and a hotel.
Right.
Then there is the one in Redway and that has some heavier uses associated with it, kind of incubator style development that's made a little bit more on the heavy commercial end, but not really what you would call truly industrial.
Is it industrially zoned?
It's zoned business park.
Right.
Is it multi-zone though? Is it?
There are a couple of different zones there. On the one side, it does have industrial, yes.
Yep, it's heavy industrial on one side, isn't it?
Let me verify that.
Getting pretty granular here, but.
I'm sorry though, but right over the fences, there is residential currently.
Yeah.
And so if you were to change with your language suggestion of surrounding areas, not.
No, this is only for commercial zoning. So if they're residential zone on the other side, this ordinance doesn't apply to them.
Okay, so not just the, okay.
Yeah, it would only apply to the, the commercial zone.
Okay.
Within, adjacent to it industrial, not the residential zone. This, this would not apply.
Okay. You don't have to look at that, John, then.
Well, I.
Well, at least confirm what I say is true, John, so, I don't want, fact check me, please.
Use my tip.
I thought this was gonna be a quick one.
Yeah, you know me and zoning.
So the Evergreen Business Park is MBD and C three D.
So not heavy industrial then?
It's not heavy industrial.
Okay.
It's heavy commercial.
So it wouldn't apply, this, I, this concept of not having it adjacent to industrial wouldn't apply to the Evergreen Business Park?
That is correct.
Great. Perfect.
Yes. How many parcels are we talking about that this could actually happen on before we beat this horse to death? Are there any horses in the race?
So in, in the MB, there's less than, I want to say less than twenty, less than twenty-five.
And I know we've had a large influx of people wanting to expand their industrial use in Humboldt County, so.
In the commercial zones, there's, there's quite a few. And this is primarily targeted at commercial. We are identifying MB as a location where it can be allowed, but is primarily targeted at the commercial districts because those are where the shopping and services and public transit are predominantly found.
So would we allow people to change zoning to get into this? Did, I'm, I, I still look at the McKay Track that now has a hundred and eighty multifamily units to be built that for some reason we can't seem to get done. And it's within a half-mile bus lines, schools, grocery stores, restaurants, kind of what we're looking for. But for some reason, we can't allow it to happen, so.
Well, there's a different complication there. The, the board has, has approved that, that from the county's perspective, the only thing that needs to happen.
Give me services.
It needs to be annexed.
Serve influence.
Can I ask a question about the parking for a second? You mentioned, there's a couple thresholds for parking in here. One is for affordable units. It's, it's exempt from parking requirements for affordable housing units. Is that right?
That is correct when it's within a half-mile of a bus, bus station.
Okay.
Or bus stop.
Bus stop.
Yep.
Okay. Could we, I mean, as a policy decision, could we just say all housing within a half-mile of a, of a bus stop?
With, as a policy decision, yes.
To exclude parking, the parking?
It's not to exclude it, it's not to require it.
Not to require, well, same thing, Mike.
Well, it's not because the developer could build parking. They have the absolute right to do that. And, and where no one's telling them not to build parking, they're just saying, they're giving them the entitlement or removing the restriction around parking. It's actually expanding the developer's entitlement.
Yeah, I could, that seems to put quite a burden on the neighboring properties because we have, you can drive down Fourth Street and go to the fifty units we have built by the co-op that didn't have any parking and all the streets around it are, I guarantee you, there's probably eight cars that have no current licenses and there are cars parked everywhere around it. Now, that's a good place because you've got a hotel, you've got, it's not a lot of traffic. But if you put these in areas that we're talking about putting them in, that it's gonna affect other people's parking, then it becomes an issue. And I just, I think some parking for, because there's just no possible way that you're gonna build thirty units on acre and nobody's gonna have a car and everybody that visits is gonna walk or ride their bike on HRI Street. So, I mean, I, I, I know, I know we're trying to get everybody out of their cars and everything else, but we, I'm pretty sure we all drove here this morning. So I just think no parking is a, is an issue.
And may I appreciate that perspective. John, what about in places, excuse me, where, where folks need to or want to put in one or two units within a commercial zone, residential? I mean, could we have a threshold around that as opposed to when we do something larger? And, and this would be outside the affordable and within the, or within the half-mile. It's just, in some places, the, the impacts might be quite small if the project's small enough and maybe insignificant. And yet very significant in terms of the, the cost to develop a unit or two in your commercial property.
I mean, one of the things that the planning commission has discussed in the past is to greatly reduce the parking standards for, like the tiny home village per unit. for, like the tiny home village per-unit requirements, or for the emergency housing. It's really bad to manipulate parking on an ordinance-by-ordinance or project-by-project basis, because then you end up all over the place in terms of what the parking requirements may be, it's really something that does need to be tackled at a macro level, I'll stop with that, but in this particular case, if the board is interested in allowing, you know, a limited number of residential units, like less than 10 to existing parking, and saying that the new additional units don't require additional parking to be provided, that's a policy decision, that could be done. One of the things that the Planning Commission did in their approval is that they allowed a 50% reduction, basically in a mixed-use kind of scenario, and one of the things, that could probably be tweaked a little bit to say that where there's a mixed-unit environment and there's commercial and residential, because of the nature of the off-peak uses, commercial...
Like a diurnal.
Yeah, being used at a different time than the residential, that perhaps the residential uses don't require additional parking at all. Right now, the way the ordinance is written requires the residential units to provide 50% of the normal parking requirement, so there is that existing element in there. The other thing the Planning Commission has done in the past is to reduce some of these parking requirements by 50%, just across the board, and it's not necessarily, as you mentioned, that they can't put the parking in, but it gives them the opportunity then to design the parking to meet what their projected clientele are going to require.
Right. I think I've gone through all my questions, for me, anyway.
Anybody else? Supervisor John?
So you mentioned that urban clusters in McKinleville down to, I forget what you said, but City of Trinidad's actually an urban cluster as well, we talked about this.
Within the city itself.
The city limits, yes. Not the general area like West Haven, et cetera, but just the city.
We don't have any commercial zoning there, the county doesn't have commercial zoning there. Okay.
So Chair, I would offer you a choice of whether or not you just want to finish this, the discussion on this ordinance, take action on this, and then we can move to the other ordinance, or we can introduce the other ordinance, but it may...
Can you give me a bridge version of what the discussion was at the Planning Commission on this? Because I'm, you got some pretty good heads on there that are coming up with some...
The Planning Commission struggled with parking, and wanted to see the, really the amount of parking be minimized, and where it made sense to eliminate parking to allow that to occur, that kind of the compromise was relative to within a half-mile of a transit stop and for affordable housing, that no parking would be required. Again, parking could be provided, but it's not required. I think the Commission also struggled with the number of units, and after they had taken action on the tiny home village, they settled that 30 units per acre was probably appropriate, and understood the recommendation to have a minimum for undeveloped parcels to discourage precious land within community plan areas from being converted to just single-family residential, that wanted to see a good use of that land within areas that are designated for higher intensity of use. I think those were their primary struggles.
I'll ask for a public comment, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Do we have someone on the line?
We do, caller 7718, star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Kate Swawsky, you know, I'm having a problem with this lack of parking. A great share of problems between neighbors are what we call parking wars out there, and you can see somebody parking in their house, it's in the street they can park on, it's a problem, let alone eliminating so much of it by... I've always, when I built something, I always thought I could get as much parking as I can, it's not more than required, back in the day. That legally, so a major concern to me, I think you're setting yourself up for a major problem. Another comment I have is I did send off an email to John this morning, he didn't get it back to me, at 8:42, I had a question for John, and it says, today's planning, I did a piece come out against chain link fence, and his answer to me, I think it was at 9:22, was yes. I understand, this is a public health and safety issue, and it's an affordability issue. If you can't have like a four-foot-high chain link fence, you're at least...
Different, different ordinance.
The planning commission is talking about wonderful, fantastic, fantastic, fantastic. But I highly recommend that you do not outlaw chain link fence, you allow fully chain extension backyard, it's to keep kids in, dogs in, people out, and kids and dogs out of people's backyard, so I think you may wish to take a look at that one, now we'll see what happens, and it's a good deliberation, it's about being...
Thank you.
John, I just, since we've talked about housing for as long as I remember, and I hate to use the word streamline and everything else, but the biggest restriction that I hear from a lot of developers is, and this is nothing against your office, is we've put so many restrictions on everything they do, that it's hard for them to get anything built, and I don't know how many, I mean, a lot of guys aren't building houses anymore, and we're losing out of contractors, and I just, we're making all these, and I don't think union labor or prevailing wage labor, because there's a lot of non-union that are skilled, I think with that being the driving force on a lot of this, but the private contractors want to kind of get going to with their own dollar on SB 6, they will be prevailing if they get any, if they take any of the funding that is available along any of the housing monies that we have, so we've got a couple contractors doing that now. So with that being said, is there a, we're not building a lot of stuff, and I just don't know, everybody wants to get a piece of their pie, and it just, you know, it just seems like, I'm going through the same rant, I always do, but Dr. Guy the other day, what died home, has built 45 units in four years on five different parcels, we'd still be talking about it. So I don't know, if we're going to solve the housing crisis, then we've got to solve it, we can't beat it to death, that's, I mean, that's where it's going to come to, and I don't know how we get there. Supervisor Wilson?
I'm going to say, in general, this ordinance increases entitlements and decreases restrictions for building housing. So I'm going to say, that's the goal, and most of what I was talking about here was actually decreasing restrictions and increasing entitlements, except for maybe this setback around the industrial, most of what I was talking about was doing that, so just, for what it's worth, that's the direction that this is going, in what we're talking about in this moment. John, we have this ordinance, we have another ordinance, are we, right, that was being talked about by the caller, are we talking about these things in the, we're talking about these things in the same breath here?
They could be separated and talked about separately, that's why I was kind of mentioning that it may be easier to finish this discussion.
Yeah.
Before we move into the presentation on the next ordinance.
And do you feel like you've got, I mean, I know we've kind of interrupted with our stuff on this first part of it, have you gotten through the discussion, your part of the discussion?
We're through on our discussion on this, it's really what policy decisions the board wishes to make.
Okay, so, of the things that, I'll just go with the list of, that I've kind of brought up here, one is the, you know, no, no expansion of the residential, of the multifamily residential development adjacent to industrial zone. I just think that that would simplify things for us, it would simplify things for the property owners, and put us, you know, less likely to get into conflict in the future, that's just, I don't see, it's the simpler, there's probably more complicated ways to do that, to have those protections, but I think that's probably the simplest. The second question, or whatever part of this was, the idea of not having, or these entitlements unless they're within areas that have services.
Right.
Sure.
So that was one, I mean, I'm just going to go down the list of, you know...
Maybe, Mike, could we get consensus on that, because I'm not okay with that change.
No, that's, I get, I'm just going through like what the suggested changes are, I don't, I'm not saying, for me, I'm just saying...
Okay.
I'm just trying to get my list and my head straight, and we're all talking about the same thing, that's all.
Okay, so I don't know if your suggestions, if the director is moving on those, or what?
I'm not moving on anything right now, I think that one of the things that would be helpful, perhaps for the board, is to go through these individually and get a consensus vote, and then we can move through and make changes as we go, if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful, and if you could also, I mean, coming into this discussion, it's kind of veered around, so if you could help synthesize a bit of that, of what you've heard, and then we can figure that out, so let's start with number, I'm just numbering, again, I, this is like as my usual stream of consciousness, it's not in any particular order, so let's just start with the industrial zone, you know, no allowance of parcels next to industrial's parcels, that one's pretty clean, right? In terms of the concept.
So, we would just kind of modify the applicability section to allow the zones and say, except where adjacent to land-zoned, heavy industrial or light industrial.
Can I ask a...
Supervisor Bushnell?
So what about out in Lake Carlotta, where it, that's heavy industrial, where the mill site was, and those adjacent areas are residential around there?
This wouldn't apply.
That, this wouldn't apply there?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, it only applies to where the commercial zoning is adjacent to...
Industrial zone.
Industrial zoning, because all we're talking about is expanding the uses within our commercial zones.
So right across the street is commercial, from that, where the restaurant used to be, the post office is now.
Right.
And there's residential there, there's residential on top, and those buildings are vacant below, so this would preclude that.
Yes.
I'm not okay with that.
What do you mean by across the street, is that we...
That would be adjacent.
Okay, so we include streets as being adjacent?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, is that, can we think of any other place in the county where this is, where that's the thing?
Scotia? Scotia's got heavy industrial across the street, it's got...
Scotia probably has heavy industrial and commercial.
It does have heavy industrial, and then you've got housing surrounding it, surrounds the whole facility, and there's also lands that are going to come available, commercial lands that are going to become available. And did we, have we rezoned, and I know we have buildings there, have we rezoned everything at the old River Sawmill Site? There's houses in back of it.
Right.
River runs from Alton to Riedel, basically on the left side.
That's all ag up behind there, there are residences up there, but...
But they're, yeah.
It's zoned like AG 160.
It's not commercial.
It's not commercial.
Okay, okay. Well, if it's, yeah, if it's too much of an issue, I'm not going to stress about it, and then under the parking requirements, I mean, I think, if, I think in a proposal maybe to, if it's five units or less within a half-mile of the, of transit, reducing the parking requirement, or eliminating the parking requirement, might be helpful for those commercial areas that are, you know, so that they could develop, would the board be okay with that?
I, I mean, I liked your suggestion of, before.
Okay.
Because it was less restrictive.
So just removing parking requirements within a half-mile of the transit for all housing?
So we would just take that last sentence completely out, that has the limitation on being affordable.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can we, well, I mean, honestly, that, that for me is a pretty good space. And can you remember anything else we talked about that was in your notes, sorry?
Yeah, the other thing that was discussed, and there was disagreement on, was whether or not it needed to be within a CSD or have public water or sewer.
Yeah, I mean, I still think that that's a, that's a pretty, that would be very, very helpful, except for, we could limit that, and I think we talked about, I know that Supervisor Bushnell was like, no, and I was like, yes, but we could say, a compromise on that would be like, if it's five units or less, or something that's kind of like not going to, or the other one is that it's a condition to use permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a special permit.
A special permit.
I would, I would be okay with the special permit going to the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
It still would allow for that activity in areas in my district that I think that are appropriate.
Right, at least allow the discussion of them, for sure, through the zoning administrator, okay, I think that's, those are reasonable changes. Look at it, legislating from the dais, as they call it.
At least giving it an effort.
Yeah, we did all right.
Supervisor John?
I'm fine with those changes as discussed.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I am fine with those two suggested changes. So I would make a motion that we adopt the ordinance with the two suggested changes, and I think, John, could you email them to?
I absolutely will.
And just a process question, so we're going to, it looks like the direction is that we're moving is to split this agenda item into two pieces?
Correct.
Okay, because it's, it's not just, we just talked about like the inland ordinance, right? And then there's the coastal part of that, so how would that?
We will make the same changes in the coastal, so it'd be a motion to adopt the inland and the coastal with the changes recommended.
Okay, and I second the motion, assuming that you have, assuming stated, yeah, good.
Supervisor Wilson, I'm sorry, did you second that?
Yes, 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 thank you.
Are we ready for the roll call vote? Okay, for this part of the item, Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
All right. Second verse, same as the first?
So, the next ordinance is really a set of zoning updates that individually are quite small. Cumulatively, they're not significant, but we'll just run through those very fast.
The first change, the first change of the zoning updates ordinance is to update the definition of structure to exclude fences up to seven feet in height. This is to be consistent with the building code, and so that a planning permit or variance would not be required for a fence up to seven feet in height on property lines. Staff recommended that fences in residential zones shall be a maximum of three feet in height for any portion of the fence located within front yard setback. To promote neighborhood feel and improve visibility and safety, the planning commission decided that solid fences would have a maximum of three feet in height for any portion of the fence located within the front yard setback in the following zones of residential suburban, residential one-family, residential two-family for inland, residential single-family, and mixed residential for coastal. Open fences could still go up to seven feet in, within the front yard setback. It must be at least seventy percent open to the passage of light and air. Chain link and other woven wire fencing smaller than six gauge shall be used in the front, shall not be used in the front yard setback. Housing implementation measure sixty-three calls to remove the definition of family and references thereto. Staff recommended to amend the definition of family to be consistent with the ruling of California Supreme Court case City of Santa Barbara versus Admanson in nineteen eighty. The intention of this implementation measure was to be consistent with that court ruling. In that court case, the Supreme, California Supreme Court was held an ordinance that defined family as not more than five unrelated people. The rule of five was unconstitutional violation of right to privacy. The inland and coastal definitions of family were amended to remove any limit to the number of people or their relationship within this ordinance. Mini storage was previously not defined in the zoning regulations. Since mini storage was not defined, zoning regulations have been interpreted to previously permit mini storage under the storage warehousing use and as part of the warehousing, storage, and distribution use type, which refers to establishments or places of businesses primarily engaged in enclosed or open-air wholesaling, storage, distribution, and handling of materials and equipment other than live animals and plants. Mini storage will now be defined as one or more buildings used for the storage of goods and materials within self-contained compartments by various users, also referred to as self-storage. The storage warehouse use type will be removed as allowed use from neighborhood commercial and community commercial. Mini storage will be allowed with a conditional use permit in the following zones of industrial, commercial, business park, and limited industrial within inland zones, commercial general, business park, and light industrial, and coastal zones. And this is to promote the use of commercial zonings, that, to promote that areas that allow or have utilities are used for uses that need more utilities rather than mini storage, which would require minimal electricity and takes away potential development from uses that need those utilities. Finally, in the inland-only version of this ordinance, business park will be updated to allow for residential uses subordinate to commercial uses and permitted uses within housing opportunity zones. This is to be consistent with other commercial zones that currently principally permit this. However, it would still allow for a special permit for areas within housing opportunity zones. And then in residential multiple family, the requirement of containing four funerary units per building will be removed from dwelling groups and multiple dwellings. This is to just allow more flexibility in housing types and structures. And that will conclude that presentation. It'll be open up for questions.
So, on the mini storages, what does that, does that take more places out of play?
It takes, yes, C1, C2 out of play, and really encourages it to go in C3, MB, LI, or ML and MH.
See, we're, we sit up here, and we're pushing for multi-storied, multi-family units and everything else with no parking, no garages, and I think a lot of us have paddle boards, surfboards, other type of things, and we're basically telling people they can't have those because I don't know how they're going to put them in a nine-hundred-square-foot apartment with a child and a mom and dad, so, and they're building more storage units, they seem to be. And costs has got prohibitive now, but it doesn't seem to be a, a lot of, you don't see a lot of two-for-ones, you know, get one year free if you buy three years or anything up here. So, I just, is that, is that still a need?
It's a need, but we're balancing that need with the, what we're trying to do in terms of the land use fabric that, from a planning perspective, where uses are allowed, and looking to concentrate uses where there are utilities, where there are services. And on the one hand, today, we incorporated residences into those zones, and then not allowing the mini storage there means that there's not the mini storage competing for that same land. And moving to have the mini storages rather than being placed in the center of mixed-use, commercial, residential development, to be moved to the periphery.
I think, okay, because I look back at the, I guess the last ones we did, last one we did was the one on Myrtle, I believe, Myrtle and Lucas. And there's two others within a half mile each way of that. There's five hundred and fifty units within a half mile where that would go, and I'm sure they'd done their market study. So, obviously, there's, was a need. And sixty-five years ago, I can tell you there were four horses and a cow in that field, you know, in that area, and there's nothing been there ever since, so.
Yeah, we're not trying to take away the use. We're just trying to redirect where the use is located.
I'm just, like I said, what we put on paper looks really good, but unless we ground to it that we're creating more of an imposition than we're actually fixing and not getting anywhere. But it feels good. Any public comment on this? Seeing none. Anything on the phone? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board.
I think these are great changes. I mean, they're, they're just putting us in the same space as most other jurisdictions in terms of prioritizing. And in neighborhood cohesion, I think it's important. I'm happy to make the motion when the time comes, which may be now. I'll make the motion to move ahead with staff recommendation on this cleanup.
Second? Moved and seconded, Nikki?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries three to one.
I can actually take on this last item, as I think it will be very, very quick. The final item before I...
Through the chair, or, good job to staff on getting this all done. I really appreciate it. So, and great presentation.
No worries at all. I'm sorry if I'm jumping the gun some here. The final item before we go into closed session for the time set at eleven is a Department of Health and Human Services item to request an exemption to the hiring freeze. But in particular, it comes before your board as a departmental item, as they are also requesting an exemption to the one hundred and eighty-day waiting period for retired new tenant Mark Lemers, who will be coming back on to assist with this work. And thus, requirement of CalPERS is that that be heard by your board as a departmental item in order to approve that exemption to the one hundred and eighty-day retirement requirements. So, with that, if your board would approve, we will conclude the agenda, and then can break until eleven, where council can read in the closed session items.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'm happy to move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. No one on the phone, Nikki?
No, Chair Bone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll start with you, Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Please read in our closed session item.
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and E3 in order to discuss exposure to litigation in one potential case regarding the claim for damages submitted by Darren Richard Dixon. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Greenleaf Nurseries LLC et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV 2300937.
Thank you. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will adjourn immediately into closed session. Eric? I'll bring it back to the, welcome back. I will bring it back to county council.
Thank you, Chair Bone. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items G1 and G2.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn in the honor of... All right. Thank you very much.